Leading the order of the Page County Planning Commission, I would start off with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, a moment of silence. Casey, under your report, are you going to talk about the thing that was in the stand like recently?
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was monitoring it out.
Okay, all right. All right, so has anybody got any changes or anything they want to make or additions to the agenda? If not, please make a motion.
I believe we adopt the agenda as presented, printed, and presented.
All right. Gary, a minute, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. All right, we don't have a public hearing. We do have citizens' comments on agenda items. Ms. Potterback?
There are six speakers. Charles Newton.
Hi, folks. I thought you might be interested to know something that I've heard a number of people ask about related to solar ordinance, and that's that the power company got back to me with the average daily consumption here in Page County, and apparently it's right around 30 megawatts, average daily use, power-wise. They said, obviously, there are peaks in the really cold winter and sometimes peaks in the summer when there's air conditioning, lots of air conditioning needs, but that was the average daily. So I thought that was interesting. It's not directly related to what you're doing, but I thought you might be interested. I would like to ask that you consider putting back some of the recommendations in the draft that Berkeley Group gave you for a solar ordinance, in particular about forested areas. I guess the, it's in 12575A, the minimum development standards, and I gather that your problem, question about forested areas was how do you define them? Well, if you ask a forester, I'm sure they can give you a definition, you know, of how many trees per acre, as opposed to, you know, just one tree, that would certainly not be a forested area. But I think you'd be wise to keep that in there because certainly trees are tremendous carbon sink in terms of all the carbon-based fuels that we're using, and I know that solar power generation certainly offsets any carbon-based power that we might need, but we don't really want to be cutting down our trees to put up the solar thing. It just doesn't make sense. And then the other item right after that is item 12575A5, and that's talking about our farmland of statewide importance. And, you know, with our leading agriculture being our leading industry, we certainly need to protect our good farm soils. And so the farmland of statewide importance and also what the feds call prime farmland, those two categories really, really should be protected. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newton.
Paul Hallowell.
I was really encouraged at the last meeting to see the commission start to come together in a positive manner, and I hope that, I certainly hope that trend continues. There is an item that had been either minimized or eliminated from the Berkeley draft that I would like to encourage you to revisit, and that is the protection of historic and cultural resources. Our comprehensive plan, in Chapter Three, Volume One, Goal One, says preserve and enhance historic and cultural resources that are vital to the heritage of the county. And they go on, Policies 1.1 through 1.9, back that up, and in particular, Policy 1.4, that says ensure that proposed development is compatible with recognized historic architectural landscape or archaeological attributes of the surrounding area, and that it does not disturb archaeological resources or agricultural activities on the development site. These, there are 31 structures and districts that are listed on the National Register of Historic Places in Page County, and they are enumerated and described in our comprehensive plan, Volume Two, Chapter 2.3. There's 27 structures and four districts. They're very well described, and there's no reason why they can't be included and protected. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Hallowell.
Can I do that with you?
What's the name again?
Can I do that with you?
I'll be quick on this one. Before you sell our soul to the solar people, just look at what's happening in California with their renewable energies now. They're in the middle of a heat wave, and people are without their electricity because they don't have the capacity to supply. Thank you.
Last week, I went to the meeting that Berkeley Group had on the zoning. I know some of you are there. There is great emphasis on the importance of maintaining the rural character of Page County, protections of pristine views, interest corridors, agriculture, tourism, environment, rivers. People come here to visit and/or live, and they should be able to enjoy the assets. They hold the high regard to preserve and protect, which is the view sheds and the rural character. Industrial solar needs to be aligned with the comprehensive plan, not against it. I also thought there was a lot of good progress last week with limiting the size of the projects. It was noted that 70% of the committee agreed that the industrial electrical facility shouldn't be over 200 acres within the fence. We were hoping that perhaps a limit would be placed on how many of the projects would be allowed, not to overburden the lines, which will then have to be upgraded, and those costs passed on to the local consumers. We hope that the other protective measures are put back into the ordinance that were stripped out by the Planning Commission, that were recommended by the Berkeley Group. Charlie and Paul mentioned a few of those. There was several times the chairman promised to address our concerns during the meetings. Back in February, we were told to have our stuff in, and then that was taken out of the meetings. I don't think that our comments that we've submitted have been given proper consideration after six months. Additionally, I've been reading up on the cost of reclaiming land currently used for solar panels to put it back to farmland. It's a document put out by Dr. Heinger from the Department of Crop and Soil Sciences of the North Carolina State University. It was just done in July 2020. So with the cost of removing solar equipment from site, the cost of mitigation of the heavy metals and herbicide residues, the cost of restoring soil properties, with the soil compaction and the nutrient levels, it'll cost about $1,780 per acre to put that land back into use, and it could take multiple years. So if you haven't read that document, it's a gesture. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Rob Graves.
I appreciate you all letting us stick tonight, and I hope you all can hear me, okay? I feel like we shouldn't sacrifice the thoughtful and visionary composition of the comprehensive plan in order for a handful of farmers to take offers of their farms. This at best rewards just a few, a handful of individuals, and interests the economic future for the greater majority of the citizens here in Page County. Those things really need to be taken pretty seriously, I think. It was very important to have scenic view sheds, as has been said by others tonight, to protect our integrity of our unique Page County. As I spoke to last time, we do have a very unique county. Now, 200 contiguous acres, while this is a compromise in my mind, still remains a tremendous swath of land littered with Chinese-made panels. Without question, industrial solar sites are records to our natural conservation efforts. With all the wild grasses and all of the things that are proposed to put in there, to me, it's nothing but lipstick on a pig, quite honestly. And I say that because, tell me the deer that can go in there. Tell me the other animals that can go through there, and, you know, be kind of snickered and say, well, that's laying that. What it really is, when most of us were growing up, I never saw a wild goose here. Now they're here. Guess why? Because the wild Virginia's grown like crazy. They had to seek other habitats out. You're going to reshift all our habitat here just for, you know, putting in a fenced-in area? Just, that leaves me really sour, that part of it, with all of them everywhere. But, you know, we've come a long way. I feel like the last meeting was very productive. I complimented Mr. Weaver on his proposal of 200 acres. You know, I hope that sticks. Also mentioned to him, I feel like a sunset needs to be somewhere in this language. I mean, a lot, a lot of, I don't think a lot of people in this room, maybe even including myself, are going to realize when you see multiple 200 acres in this county, you can see a whole lot of them. Add to thousands and thousands of acres, and so it needs to be capped somewhere, sunset somewhere in this thing. There again, our natural topography just will not withstand it, and neither will our, you know, the ruination of what we have. I do feel, you know, again, I said, great progress has been made, compromise, but let it not be compromising to our efforts as we go forward, especially to a plan. That's the vision for this future. So let's try to protect what we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Thank you.
I'm Clyde Humphrey, and I would like to remind you this evening of some of the things that you considered in October of 2019, or the Planning Commission that was seated at that time. At that time, our understanding was that there would not be a solar ordinance, and that any guidelines on pertaining to the planning for solar facilities would need to be addressed in the comprehensive plan. So the Subcommittee on Recommending Changes to the Comprehensive Plan, of which I was a participant, prepared detailed recommendations for what should be included in the comprehensive plan, given that there would not be a solar ordinance. And we presented those recommendations in writing to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission reviewed them and recommended changes in at least four iterations. That is, in four iterations, the Planning Committee recommended changes to what we were writing, and we incorporated those changes. So in, by October the 22nd of 2019, the Planning Commission was ready to go forward with these proposed changes to the comprehensive plan to address renewable energy, to go forward with a public hearing, and they were prepared, based on the results of the public hearing, to recommend the proposed changes to the Board of Supervisors. And I wanted to remind you as to what we're in, those proposed changes, which the Planning Commission was prepared to approve. First, a small solar array was defined as 20 kilowatts or less. Medium solar array is 1 megawatt or less. We reserved the right of farmers to have a 1.5-megawatt facility in accordance with state law. We recognize that Shenandoah Valley Electric Cooperative was in the process of developing community solar projects of 5 kilowatts or less, which would be treated as a utility-scale solar facility. We recognized that we would have utility-scale solar facilities of 10 to 40 megawatts, which would be expected to occupy area under panels of 30 to 150 acres. At your last meeting, you adjusted that number to 200 acres, and I'm in agreement with that change. And we recognize that the smaller utility-scale solar facilities, 150 acres or less, make that 200, would be easier to accommodate, require less land. Sites would be more likely to be found in the area of the county, and would be more easily shielded with buffering, resulting in less impact on view shed and neighboring properties. Given those considerations, the Planning Commission had reviewed and was prepared to approve various policies, including preferably not on existing forest land, although an exception could be made for low-production forests on poor soils. Recognize that smaller sites can be more easily screened and are less noticeable. It was established as a policy that it was preferable that the total area encompassing solar panels on multiple facilities within any two-mile diameter circle should be less than 150 acres, kind of equivalent to saying the solar project should be not more than 150 acres. But if you have an acre such as the Dam Road Project, is that the right name?
100 acres.
Of 76 acres, then you should be able to put another 74-acre project close to it and still not violate the 150-acre criteria. Preferably not within a quarter mile of the federal highway, not within the primary, secondary service areas of towns, or, and not adjacent to residential districts or subdivisions. Preferably not within one mile of any town limit. On as little farmland with soils categorized as prime farmland or farmland of secondary, of statewide importance, is practical, and adjacent to as few residential properties as practical. Now, of course, because these recommendations were intended to go into a comprehensive plan, they would use words like preferred as opposed to shell. If you were writing the same criteria into the ordinance, the appropriate word would be shell. So, but what I want to point out and emphasize was that in October 22nd of last year, the Planning Commission was entirely comfortable with these recommendations. They had reviewed the, at least four iterations of the drafts that were presented by the Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee, and were prepared to go forward with a public hearing. It was at that point in time, for better or worse, that the county administration announced that they had a contract with Berkeley Group to draft an ordinance, which kind of short-circuited the work that we were doing, that the Planning Commission was doing. And that's been almost a year. And so granted to say that, you know, we're not much closer to having a solar ordinance now than we were a year ago. That being said, you know, the rationale that we had for policies a year ago were based on the needs of the county. They were based on the need to preserve our economy, both the agriculture economy and the tourism economy, and there is nothing changed in the meantime that would, should cause us to rethink any of those criteria that we were supporting a year ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Humphrey.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving to business. On solar regulations, you wanted to talk about that?
Yeah, so first of all, just a little update in regards to the language that we discussed last week, or two weeks ago. Rebecca from the Berkeley Group is working on developing language to go into the big initiative ordinance, based on conversation. There was a little bit of question back and forth on her wanting to understand, she had the, you know, she was understanding what the proposal was. So her and Keith kind of went back and forth, and I do not have a draft of that yet. Again, they are scheduled to come on September the 22nd, which will be in the next meeting. The plan is that she hopefully will tend to believe, this is what I was told on Friday, she will have the revised draft, hopefully to be by September 14th or 15th, which is next Monday or Tuesday, I think, on the calendar in front of me. As soon as I get it, I plan on sending it out directly to you all. So my suggestion would be, once you get it on the 14th or 15th, be looking at it, be prepared with your questions, so that when she, when Rebecca's here on the 22nd, she can review any questions that you have, and of course, review the revisions that she's done based on the discussion. Also, at the last Board of Supervisors meeting last week, there was discussion on the solar regulations related to our contract with the Berkeley Group. You've heard, November will be a year since we have received the draft, the initial draft from them. Based on wanting to stay within the contract as far as the funds are concerned, what we're paying them, based on the timeline, that sort of thing, this is what I'm gathering. The board is requesting that the Planning Commission hold their public hearing on the solar regulations on October the 13th. And then they are also requesting that the introduction on the ordinance be given to them at their October 20th meeting, which will be the following meeting. In regards to Berkeley Group and the staff, Rebecca will be here again in person on September the 22nd. At the public hearing, because of how they budgeted for the meetings, she will not be able to be in person, but she will be available via phone. So she will participate remotely at the public hearing, but she will not be here in person. And then on October the 20th, she will present the ordinance to, or the regulations to the Board of Supervisors in person. That is what they've requested. I would suggest that you consider, at some point, either have tonight or the next meeting, which would be the 22nd, I would suggest that you consider, based on that recommendation or suggestion, setting it, setting the public hearing to motion.
Okay. Let me go to the mic.
And that's all I have.
Okay, so they're coming on the 14th?
No, no, Rebecca will be here on September the 22nd. The plan is to have the draft to you all by the 14th or 15th, so that you have hopefully a good, I'm hoping, a week to review it and be prepared to bring your questions for the 22nd.
Right, right. As you can tell, we need to get this moving, and she's going to have a presentation for us, and so we'll be able to read it, and if you have any questions, you should, I challenge all of you, read all this, make sure you understand it, and then if you do have a question, bring it up to her, because then we're going to have a public hearing right after that, within a short time.
And I was going to also say, you know, when we hopefully get it out to you on the 14th or 15th, if, while you're reviewing it, if you have questions or comments or concerns, feel free to email them to me, and I can send them directly to Rebecca. If you feel like it's something that you don't want to wait until September the 22nd, we have that open dialogue. I mean, I've sent, I've sent her questions from commissioners. I've been doing that. So if it's something that you think of or you review that you're, you know, don't, my point is, don't feel like you have to wait until September the 22nd. We can communicate through email with her, so.
Mr. Carr.
One moment. Now, we'll, all right, we'll start by that. Go ahead.
In regard to that comment, I'm sure that, I know I have some concerns to be relayed today, so would you like to do those now? Or do you want to do those later?
We don't have to.
Oh, she said, any additional concerns that you might have? And because you're, I think I heard you, that you have a dialogue with her?
Yeah, I am.
And at any time, we can send concerns. So do you want to do that now, or do you want to do that later?
No, let's do it now. Don't worry.
Well, one of the, thanks to the speakers that they did remind me of many things, and I appreciate that, but especially it reminds me that in terms of reclaiming the land, that the wording within the, we haven't really discussed the wording that is within the current draft, which says that the plant, that there will be a county-approved plan for reclamation, for reclaiming. And that, even, and when the Subcommittee was meeting that, we thought that was somewhat of a trap, because really what the consultants were saying was, the ordinance was just going to say, there's a county-approved plan. And that seems like such a large, such an important part for the ordinance, that I was hesitant to think it was simply going to be covered by that. that I was hesitant to think it was simply going to be covered by that, that in the end, it was the county-approved plan. So that, I would like to know how they might suggest that we make that section, which involves how we go back to farmland after solar, by being a little more precise about what that means. Because it really is saying that the, to me, it said, the consultants aren't really doing that, the county would have to approve something. And it seems like our consultants should be helping us to do that. Based on my calculation, and I hope this is correct, their original offer was for about 325 acres, depending on how you defined, how you interpreted the percentage versus the total 500. My concern was that as we reduced it to 200, which is, which I accepted and said I would vote with majority. And so I kind of thought it was 100% last week, but maybe 70% was because not everybody was here, but then I think most of us were here. So I really am concerned that, no matter how we try to communicate to the consultants that we weren't comfortable with 500 versus a percentage. And it sounds like there's been further discussion between the consultants and one of our members. I think I heard that tonight. And that's, that kind of leaves me still feeling uncomfortable that the consultants won't just adhere to our recommendation. It's only recommendation. And so that would be my other concern. I have absolutely no problem with the historic areas. I think that's a good idea and a reasonable recommendation. The problem was that it was lumped with scenic beauty, view, and a bunch of other things in a, in a single line. And so that my concern was that there wasn't a piece of property in Page County that would be eligible because that statement is so broad that you would either be culturally sensitive or you would be in terms of beautification or it would be farmland or it would be forest or it would be, and it was all lumped together. So I certainly don't oppose Mr. Otto's suggestion, but it needs to be, it needs to be mapped. And in the end, you have to be able to have it somewhere as opposed to not have it anywhere. And there probably are a couple others, but those were things, I think it's a great time for them to kind of work on those things. So those would be my, those would be my questions to the consultants.
Bill, just want to talk? Have any questions, anything you want to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought that what Mr. Humphries said was very pertinent, a thank you. If I'm not mistaken, you were on the subcommittee, Mr. Humphries, so was Mr. Otto, and so was Mr. Newton. So we have three people. And you summarized for us.
So was Kirby and Donovan.
And two of the members, yes.
So was Donovan.
And was that summarized in the ninth draft? I recall the document called the ninth draft. Yeah, I have a copy of it with me. And I'm very sensitive to what you said. If those were resources that we were ready to protect a year ago, why a year later were they, was that protection stricken? And I can see where Mr. Holsinger is coming from, saying that maybe some of them were lumped together and then made their protection a little more difficult. Maybe we should go back to that particular article that was stricken and consider them separately. The residences, the cultural resources, the historic resources, and see which ones we can still protect with respect to the work that was put in a year ago. Maybe we should go back and look at that work and look at it. And if I'm not mistaken, you also mentioned a protection of federal highways. That seems to be an excellent idea because we're acknowledging that agriculture is our prime economic driver in the county. So there's a call to protect the farmland. And I think the Berkeley Group, am I mistaken, Tracy, that the Berkeley Group is going to come back to us with some prime farmland recommendations, especially in view of the new size?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's going to be the first time.
So forested areas could, you know, we should take another look at. And our second economic driver, and I see Mr. Graves nodding his head, is tourism. And without Lurie Caverns, we wouldn't have a lot of tourists coming to this area. They come in through, I believe mainly 340, correct me if I'm wrong, also 211, but mainly 340. They see our beautiful landscapes. One of the things that struck me, and I think you might address that in your comments later, when I was part of the public input for the general, for the revision of the general zoning ordinances insanely last week, what struck me and even got me a little emotional is that many members of the public really are very attached to the cornerstone of our comprehensive plan. I think it's in the introduction. It's mentioned many, many, many times in the comprehensive plan. And it led me to go back and read it attentive. We united the same reading as Mr. Otto did. I saw numerous, numerous mention of the protection of our rural way of life, of the scenic beauty of our county. And I believe, I'm not misquoting you, Mr. Graves, you have reminded us many, many times that we should not destroy that asset because we will not get it back. And counties that have done that have regretted it. If I'm not mistaken, Skyline Drive is a nationally protected, was it called a scenic byway or something like that? I'm not quite sure of the terminology. We have historic assets. We have many things of beauty that we should protect here. So one way of protecting them is keeping the solar site small or smaller, like Mr. Humphries very clearly explained, because that makes it easier to screen and not quite so visible. If we could add a protection of whatever the, whatever consensus or whatever scale we decide to protect them from the federal highway, I think some of, was it a quarter mile in the, in the ninth draft? Yeah, I see you saying, yeah. That is something we should consider because people coming in the county want to just see the beauty as we all do here. So I think those are very valid recommendations. I thank you gentlemen for speaking up. And in my opinion, and I'm sorry if I'm going to be a little facetious here, but if your recommendations as part of the subcommittee a year ago were valid enough to be considered by the planning commission at that time and agreed upon to be further to the board of supervisors, those recommendations should be good enough to be considered and followed upon today. So I wholeheartedly endorse your recommendation. Thank you.
So was there a message that needed to go to the?
That it's all the message was our topic.
You'll have that in a minute, but I'm happy to put it in writing, Tracy.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's a pretty important subject for us to work on. And after we get the findings from Berkeley, I think we should have a meeting to go over that. The following day, if we have time to go over a couple of days. And I'd be willing to take time, and I'm scheduled to have a meeting.
A called meeting, called meeting, Chairman, just to review it sometimes after, sometime after September 14th. We would have a called meeting, about 17th or something like that.
Well, after we get the, just the draft and then before they come here.
Yeah.
If you allow me a comment, Mr. Chairman, I didn't think of it when I spoke, but in hearing what the conversation was at the board of supervisors last week and having a subsequent conversation with one of the supervisors, a date was not recommended by the supervisors themselves. They said that they'd like to see things moving forward. I believe that the recommendation of the date of the 13th of October came through this motor. And I don't know how you feel.
I'm just talking about us.
It's coming from Abby.
I understand that, but we're a body abiding by our own rules. And if we feel that the 13th of October isn't a good date, we could make it the 20th of October and add an official meeting, you know, in between. Or we could do like Mr. Turner suggested, adding an extra meeting. But I'm not aware that the date.
Supervisors, as far as I thought, it was their, they were driving that train.
Yeah, but not with a specific date. Because I checked that to one of the supervisors.
All I can tell you is what was relayed to me. My supervisor is Emily, and that's what was given to me.
Well, let's go with what we got now. We got, if we.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to offer a motion that we, that we try, that we try and schedule in order to meet that deadline. And we just, we can just bring it up and vote on it and it'll either pass or it'll die.
Well, and now you were saying that we would have a meeting two or three days or something like that after it was received.
If we get it on the 14th, it'll be on the Monday. Or 13th is Sunday or 14th sometime. I could say 16th or 17th. And 18th would be getting in before our next meeting. I mean, the supervisors have to.
So you would rather, instead of you voicing your opinion and asking questions of them prior to the meeting, you want to have the whole meeting or the whole group to talk together, right?
And Mr. Chairman, everybody wouldn't have to attend that. It could be just for those that would be more comfortable having a set time to review it. That would, that would give us an opportunity. It would have to be an other meeting.
It'd have to be a public meeting. We'd have to have a forum, wouldn't it?
Well.
Wouldn't it have to have a forum?
I believe, in order to do business, you have to have six. But subcommittees operate with three, and that's because they're not really doing business. They're just, they're just reviewing. They're just, they're just making sure they are prepared for the next meeting, in a way. I think that would, I hope that would work.
We could have a subcommittee meeting, but how many people would want to show up? If we get 10, then we've got a public hearing. Or then we've got a public meeting. You know, we can only do three of that.
If you have six, it's a forum and then you can do business. You could actually.
Yeah, but that has to be advertised.
Well, I believe you'd probably advertise this meeting also.
Well, you'd have to do, you'd have to do it weeks ahead, wouldn't you?
Um, yeah, we could advertise. As long as we do it on social media, the courthouse, website.
A sign on the door.
A sign on the door. That constitutes notification.
Coming here is interested in doing that. Can I get a consensus on it? One, two, and three, four.
Not knowing precisely my schedule, it does really give me an opportunity to have two opportunities. And it's a busy time right now, so I really appreciate that opportunity. I may find that my schedule won't allow me to attend that meeting, but at least now I have two opportunities. Plus, it gives us a little structure. Sometimes these meetings seem a little, there seems to be sometimes some fair amount of intimidation in these meetings. Sometimes we're prepared and sometimes we're not prepared. I agree. This is one we should be prepared for.
I'm in the, my farm is, so I'm not really sure. I'm already logged down with all these. So I'm not sure I'd be able to make it. So who would be, who would want to be in charge of it?
I have a question. Between the October 13th suggested public hearing and when we meet with the Berkeley Group, how many meetings are between them? Tracy, only one? None?
You go to the Berkeley Group and then the public hearing?
Well, we should have, I think, at least a meeting or two to discuss what the Berkeley Group has presented us with. And without imposing any additional meetings on those who have a tight schedule. I mean, I'm free. I'm retired. I can make any meeting.
So can they get it earlier?
Can, I'm sorry.
Can, it doesn't sound like, it sounds like you're trying to say they should present it earlier?
No, no, what he's saying is we're going to. They cannot present earlier. They are scheduled for September the 22nd. If you are not interested or don't want to follow the recommendation that was relayed to me, then I would say that's your decision as commissioners.
What's the next date after the 13th? Because maybe that'll give us the next meeting.
The 27th.
And that's still before the end of October. So that would still fit in the deadline of the Berkeley Group of one year, right? We received it in November. Why don't we schedule it for October, for the meeting after October 13th? That's October the 27th?
Yeah, for the public hearing.
Yeah, for the public hearing. That would give us an extra, one meeting to talk about it.
That's within the Berkeley Group's time.
Oh, but you were suggesting.
Is that pushing that? Is that pushing?
He was suggesting the meeting before the 22nd.
Yes, that we just, once we did.
He wants to have a meeting for the.
But we turn around and.
Yeah.
Have it before we go into the meeting. I think it's a good idea.
Well, we could do both.
Well, let's, let's work on that first and maybe after that meeting, maybe we'll need it, maybe we won't. Let's just work on what Bill has said here was, so I'm just trying to figure out how we can do it legally.
We'll have to do it on like a Thursday or something like that.
I think we need to pick the date first.
Could we do a Zoom phone meeting instead of in person? Like we had done when we were, you know, at home with COVID? No? You can't do that?
Can we do it as a subcommittee? All right, can we do it as a, are we going to have enough interest where we're going to have a forum? That's what I want to know. Because if we can't, if we advertise it as a meeting and we don't get a forum, we can't have a, we can't talk about it.
You can talk about it, you just can't.
Well, I think there's a fun one.
I mean, we have three members not here tonight. It would be not, it's hard to make a, you know.
We have a forum, we'll do business.
No, I understand that, that's the whole thing. But I'm saying we, we might set a date, which doesn't suit them, which then would.
They set a date that doesn't suit me. I've just said that.
In the day to day.
Yeah, and I also made a motion and said we should try and meet the guidelines here. So, Mr. Chairman, I think it's an excellent opportunity for folks to get together and review the written presentation. I think it's very likely that it would make us better prepared for the next regular meeting. It would probably have to be, we select a date, you announce the meeting. If you don't have the information, you cancel.
Okay, so we receive it on the 14th?
Hopefully, right.
Do we want to have a meeting on the 15th or 16th?
Well, if we get it on 14th, it'd be kind of hard to read at all. The 15th.
Okay, we got to, it would either be Thursday or Friday or it would be the following Monday. Because I don't think everyone wants to do it on a weekend. So give me a date.
17th is the date.
No, I just got a, I don't have a doctor's appointment that day, so. I guess I can go then.
But they can sit here.
I guess that's fine. I'm more concerned about the time.
What about Monday?
We can do it at like 7:00 o'clock at night because I have a tough time during the day. Some people want to have that earlier than I, I just can't do that. So we, how about Thursday?
Anything works with me. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, anything?
Okay, Thursday, 7:00. Can we get the board room? Can we get this room?
I don't have access to the calendar here. I have to check on it. I would suggest that you give me your first date choice and then give me a second date.
Okay, then the following Monday, 21st.
At 7:00 PM?
So is that the 17th or 21st?
You send us an email on which day we.
Yeah, it'll be first day in the morning. I'll find out soon as I get in.
Make sure that gets out to all, all the rest of the members, especially ones who are not here tonight.
At 7:00 PM, right?
7:00 PM. The audience is probably just invited.
You want comments on agenda items for that agenda? Public comments or is it going to be a study section?
Um. It's not one of the, it's, I don't know. If we can keep it. If we can keep it, I'd like to do, I'd like to include the public on that. It's.
What can you?
I just don't want to stay here all night, but yeah. Because I don't know where, I don't know how this thing is going to go. But, yeah, we can, I'm sure the public can keep their, let us know what they want to hear and talk about with this, and then we'll go on.
Will the public have the document at that time?
That's up to, that has to be a FOIA, isn't it? Okay, and I'm sure many will get it, so, um. So, yeah.
Two opportunities, just like tonight?
How about one? Because this isn't a regular meeting.
So you want it to be a citizen comment on agenda item, or open citizen comment period?
Both on citizen.
Okay.
This is not a regular meeting, so compromise. We'll just have one.
Okay. So I'll let you know first thing in the morning and which date for sure that it is.
Okay. All right, um, anybody else have any other comments they had? I did hear one thing tonight, and it was about the transmission lines. And that is, I don't know if that's talked about in the ordinance a lot, but it needs to be. That's something I want to talk about.
Can you be more specific so I know what to relate to?
Current capacity, because if somebody has to expand, that's just going to, I don't know what it would take to expand these transmission lines. And I just don't want more, you know, I don't want to have, like I see down there in Riverton, where the transmission lines are basically black in the sky. So, I just don't want to have any more capacity. Or, if it can handle the capacity of the current line, of the current solar farms or whatever that's in there, then that's fine. But to expand it, but I don't want to see it go into two more lines or something like that. If they want to make a bigger transmission line, they can do that without changing the look that's currently there, and that's fine. But that's something we should be talking about, because.
In the ordinance, though, how are we going to do that?
Well, you need.
We had a lot of discussion on what is the capacity, and frankly, from my, I mean, dealing with the power company and the consultants, and no one can really give us a for sure answer, that's been my experience, of what is our actual capacity? And are we at capacity? And how many projects would put us over capacity? And I think that that's going to take a lot of work from the Berkeley Group, and frankly, I'm, I'm going to go out on a limb and say that I can barely get that information. So I just want to make sure, and I'm happy to take it back. I just want to make sure I'm understanding what I'm asking.
Mr. Chairman, that's probably what the Berkeley Group will do, but I don't think it's bad to pose it as a question.
Okay.
And I would add to that question, the thought too of this, what sometimes concerns me is that we're going to be so far from the transmission lines that we're going to need to have transmission lines to get it to the transmission lines. That, those, those two things may not have an answer. Electricity is important. It is very important, but, and if they can't make a recommendation on that at that time, they can just say, it's not really possible to do that, or our recommendation, in the end, we're making a recommendation. They're making a recommendation to us. We're making a recommendation to the board of supervisors, and the elected officials will make the law.
I'll take the questions back.
All right, good. Any more? Okay, we're back to open citizen comment period? No? No? Unfinished solar business? That's what we were on. What else did you want to talk about?
I hate just, I hate just finding.
Okay.
I don't know. I mentioned it, you know, during air conditioning, cooling.
Ready?
Yes.
The other, there are six speakers, Charles Newton.
I'll just add that when I, when I talked to S V E C, I asked the, asked those folks if they knew what the transmission company would set as their guidelines. Because we heard from Urban Grid that their hundred-megawatt facility might be about as much as they thought P J M, the transmission company, could carry. S V E C does not know. They have, they said there are so many details to, for P J M to figure out all their interconnections and what this span can handle and what that span can handle and how the energy's being moved around, that the local power company just doesn't know how P J M would set it. But I would guess that whatever their current limit is, that it's going to add too much economic cost to upgrade that line for the benefit of a solar facility. So I'm pretty sure you're going to be, whatever limit there is on that line will be where the transmission company would stay, unless the solar facility were to pay the upgrade cost, which I'd be surprised if they'd want to. That gets into pretty big money. So, I know that's not an exact answer, but I think that might help a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. David.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll allow me, you're the next speaker. Can I have a comment on that?
Well, wait until everybody's done, please.
Okay, well, sorry, sorry.
Kenny Jamelani?
I sent this to Chairman Phoenix on the twenty-ninth of August. Recent FOIA requests have turned up several eyebrow-raising developments in the ongoing solar ordinance process. Urban Grid has been in contact with several PC members since at least June, and one PC member had an in-person meeting with them on June thirtieth, 2020. This meeting is referenced in an email from Robert Probst, representing Urban Grid on July first, 2020. This is disturbing for several reasons, as Robert Janney, the attorney of record for the denied Cape Solar S U P application, has also been in contact with Urban Grid and select members of the planning commission, working to gut the protections written into our solar ordinance by the paid consultants at the Berkeley Group. On January fourteenth, 2020, Mr. Janney emails changes to Holsinger and Comer, but does not include Mr. Otto or Donnie Milton, who are both members of the PC at that time. This was before the denial of Mr. Otto's reappointment to the PC, which Mr. Janney showed keen interest in. I was present at the PC meeting where this took place. At the time, the entire episode seemed a bit contrived, where Mr. Miller wandered into the room and was spontaneously invited to be on the ordinance subcommittee. Shortly after, Mr. Otto, who had put in tons of work to protect the county, was ousted from the PC for somewhat vague reasons. On February twenty-fifth, 2020, Mr. Janney emailed Bernie Miller, Jamie Holsinger, and Jonathan Comer with recommendations for changes in the draft ordinance, referencing both individual interests and their membership on the subcommittee to development ordinance. Mr. Janney's mission as Roger Hauser's attorney is to get the Cape Solar project approved. The changes and recommendations he suggests are clearly designed to manipulate the ordinance to allow this massive installation that was denied by the board of supervisors previously. Mr. Janney's recommendations include a maximum of six hundred acres, neatly accommodating the five hundred and fifty-acre Cape project, which I am happy that y'all have cut that down to the two hundred acres that we have been hearing about this evening. A reduction of setbacks to seventy-five feet, and increasing the allowed height to fifteen feet as measured from grade at the base of each support structure, removing the cap on the maximum area of the site to be graded, along with an increase in the allowable grade from ten to fifteen percent. This suggests to me that they are planning to grade more than fifty percent of the entire site to create a wave effect allowing denser panel capacity. And he also wants to reduce the buffer zone from a hundred feet to just thirty feet. These are but a few of the recommended changes submitted to certain PC members, effectively stripping out protections and limits that. In my opinion, it is highly inappropriate for the attorney representing the S U P applicant and the solar developer to be driving the creation of our solar ordinance with collaboration of PC members who have expressed a desire to host industrial solar on their own properties and have referenced individual interests in solar power generation, while stifling comments and recommendations from other citizens who reside in the areas that will be affected. There are also changes to decommissioning, recommended by Mr. Janney, to include the so-called salvage value and other disturbing language. Mr. Janney's latest revisions, which I partly detailed here, were submitted on August twenty-first, 2020, not that long ago. And on June twenty-second, in an email to Bernie, Jamie Holsinger, and Jonathan Comer, Mr. Janney stated that he did not think that Page County should be hiring the expertise to develop standards for a solar ordinance.
Thank you.
That's. That the mission of the planning commission is to protect the county and the citizens, not to develop, not to further the interests of developers. The chairman was very rude and said, you are only one vote. There are other votes here, and others have voted against you. Even when other members have agreed with that member, a few minutes later, when that member spoke, the chairman again cut that member off rudely. As a member of the public, I'm appalled at the disrespect you've shown, meeting after meeting, to this one planning commission member. I've spoken about it before. I've written to the board of supervisors about it, and I will keep pointing it out at every meeting. It's wrong. Furthermore, when a member of the public went up to the chairman after the meeting, instead of apologizing for his behavior, his reaction was not an apology. It was a further attack on that one commission member. It's noted. This commissioner, the chairman, does not speak to the men on the commission that way. Last meeting, another member spoke out about the devaluation of the farmers' properties. He's stated many times he doesn't care about these large industrial solar projects and how they'll devalue the adjoining properties. He has stated he doesn't care about the waterways, the negative economic impacts that'll ripple through the county. But he is concerned about the devaluation of farmers' properties, and I think that all the citizens should be considered equally. And then, another thing from the last meeting was, the chairman spoke about, this would be for the common good. At multiple meetings, he's talked about his intentions of hosting solar, industrial solar on the properties on. So how does that translate to the common good? If it was for the common good, it would include what's good for all of the people, not just what needs to be rewritten to allow certain pieces of property. It's apparent that he can't make an unbiased recommendation on that, and I've noted that he's referenced his own property more than thirty times over the last six months in meetings when suggesting changes or striking protective measures from the draft ordinance, which was presented by an outside group paid for by the county, the Berkeley Group. And I read through that larger document that Darren Kofi did, and there was a lot of good information in there. I hope you guys looked at that. The purpose of the ordinance is to protect the count, and we hope that those measures will be put back in. Thank you.
Rob Graves?
I mentioned earlier, the last time I spoke, and I'm so glad I'm brought up by the chairman about the transmission lines. This is why I spoke to having a cap or sunset to solar in Page County. Because, I mean, it's obvious that that's what happened. You know, my wife mentioned it a year ago. Everybody blew her off. The way I listen, and this announced, being talked about tonight. I mean, this has been going on for so long. It frustrates me. I'm a businessman. I like to get things done, do it methodically and respectfully, and, you know, weigh all the, this there, and so much is really compromised here. And also, I forgot to mention that we need to definitely protect our three forty and two eleven corridors. It's vital for our economic survival. Truly, I'm appalled about some of the things I've heard here tonight. It's very worse.
Clay Humphrey?
I'll try to be brief. Just a couple of comments. Mr. Holsinger was commenting about the county-approved plan for decommissioning. And I think that the intent of the ordinance, and we have to make sure the wording is clear, the intent is that the developer should propose a decommissioning plan, and then the county should either approve it or tell them where they need to change it. But it's, the burden is on the developer to present the decommissioning plan. On the question of historical versus scenic versus residential or whatever, I think the confusion comes from those being lumped together in one paragraph. And I would recommend that the planning commission tell the Berkeley Group to separate those out into separate sub-paragraphs. So that if H one, whether it's historical or scenic or residential, has to stand on its own weight.
I'm sorry. I can't hear you very well, really. You can go back a little bit further, so, because I kind of lost it. Making sure it's, that's a long time. Could you go back a little bit, Mr. Humphrey, so I can.
The historical and scenic and residential or other criteria, there's confusion because they were lumped together in one paragraph. If the planning commission instructs the Berkeley Group to separate those out into separate sub-paragraphs such that each sub-paragraph has to stand on its own weight, then that would be more clear and it would be better. As far as Mr. Bernie Miller's comments about not wanting to expand the transmission lines, I agree. But the only ones that can tell us what the transmission lines can really accommodate are the people that own the transmission lines. The normal practice for a solar developer is for the county to put the burden on the solar developer to make a negotiation with the people that own the transmission lines and get pre-approval from the people that owns the transmission lines, that they can accommodate the power that's being generated. That, I think, is the normal practice, and that's what we should require, and that should satisfy us. If the developer gets a written commitment from the people that own the transmission lines, that they can accept the power, then we should be good. Now, another thing to keep in mind with that, and it relates back to the size of projects and the ability of farmers to take advantage of the opportunity to have solar projects, we should keep in mind that if we make the solar projects smaller, whether it's two hundred acres, a hundred and fifty acres, or seventy-six acres, as in the dam acre project, whatever, as you make the sites smaller, then more farmers are able to participate. You know, if the transmission lines can accommodate a total. You know, if the transmission lines can accommodate a total of 100 megawatts, for example, and I don't know that that's their limit, then you might have a choice of having one site that's 100 megawatts, or five sites that's 200 megawatts H, or even six or seven sites that are 150 megawatts H. So the, the smaller sites are not only more easily shielded and better protects our economy, but it also allows a larger number of farmers to participate in the process. Thank you.
I, once again, was encouraged to, to see that y'all are willing to put in the extra effort that it no doubt will take to get a, a better understanding of this situation, particularly between yourselves and the Berkeley Group. I just wonder whether that one effort that you have scheduled will be enough. And I encourage you not to be constrained by that requested hearing date of October 13th. If you can, if you can satisfy all your concerns and get a good mutual understanding with, with Berkeley Group as to the content of the draft, and meet, and meet that 10-13 date, so much is better. But if not, I don't think you should feel constrained to meet it. As far as the capacity of the transmission lines are concerned, I agree with everything that Mr. Humphrey just said. But I think you have to keep in mind some additional considerations. I think it is very important that we know what the, the capacity, the current capacity of this line running down through our county is. And it can be determined, that capacity can be determined. The owner of the transmission line knows what it is. It may take some extra effort to find out from the owner what, what that information is, but it's available. And the reason it's important is that I don't think we want to be, to find ourselves in a, in a situation where by allowing too much industrial solar, utility-grade solar, whatever you want to call it, we don't paint ourselves into a corner and find that we don't have adequate residual capacity on the line to accommodate our local solar usage. Mainly agricultural projects, which can be up to 1.5 megawatts. The community projects the S V E C is, is considering, which I believe can be up to 5 megawatts. And then the total of all the aggregate residential and/or commercial usage, which could add up to additional megawatts. I'd just like to see, us find out what that capacity is, so that we don't find ourselves in a situation where, yeah, we, we've got some nice, if you want to call them that, utility-scale projects, but we can't have any of our own? That's all I got.
No more speakers.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I make a comment? I didn't sign up. Is it allowed that I make a comment? Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that. So I'm Chris Anderson, live here in Page County. And I work for the Alliance for the Shenandoah Valley. This past weekend, I went to my hometown in North Carolina, Saluda, North Carolina. It's a very small town. It has a lot of similarities with Luray. It's very beautiful. It's very green, it's in the mountains. They have done a great job of protecting their history. The whole downtown is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. It's, they've moved their ecotourism along by, there's a zip line over the Green River Gorge. Cyclists come up through the watershed from Greenville, South Carolina. There's hiking all over, very similar to, to Page County. We've got the river here, as you all know. We've got Luray Caverns, we've got Skyline Tribe, we've got George Washington. Great biking all around. My point is, Saluda is thriving. I could not believe it. I went back this weekend, it is packed. Middle of a pandemic holiday weekend, I couldn't find a place to park downtown. People gravitate to the places that protect their assets. Page County, Page County is gorgeous in that same way. People come here to find something that's special and unique. So I, I support the comments that were made this evening about moving carefully with solar, keeping the size small, 200 acres. I'm excited about the potential of planting the native warm season grasses and wildflowers to be compatible with the ecology in the area. Our point is just heed the comments this, this evening. And I know you all are, are moving carefully. But I would just like to support the, the comments for size and good siding. Because if we protect what's here, it's, it's setting up the, the county for long-term economic growth through the protection of our, our, our natural resources and culture and, and history. Thank you.
All right. I have no report. Do you have a report?
Just a couple of things. The Leanna Dean, especially his permit application was thrown before the board for the public care in September 15. And then I'd also like to talk briefly about those, the zoning ordinance and subdivision lane ordinance. We did have our stakeholder meetings all day. It was one of those days last week. I don't know also what day it actually was, Wednesday. And then we had our public meeting at the Stanley Fire Hall. I felt like that the stakeholder meetings and the public meeting went really well. Is correct, Mr. Chairman? I don't think anyone else. So if you have anything else to add, anybody that was there that you want to share, go ahead. But the Berkeley Group, I've received positive feedback on the information that they, that they felt they received from our community. And the next step is for them to start drafting the ordinance. I will tell you before I, before I let anybody else say anything, they are proposing a pretty aggressive schedule. We will have at least four joint work sessions with the board, possibly starting as early as October and November. They're going to do, from what I understand, the work sessions on the drafts and sections, rather than giving you an entire document. That's, that's what I've gathered so far. But they're, but based on their timeline, they are, they are predicting or suggesting, maybe I should say, that this process be done by this time next year. It's an aggressive timeline. So just keep that in mind. We are going to have some, you know, we'll give you as much notice as we can as far as the joint meetings. But of course, we always, I'll always say, do your best to attend those meetings once they start. And like I said, there will be at least four. So anybody that had anything that, that they wanted to share from the public meeting?
Well, I was at the meeting and saw there. I think what was proposed for was subdivision, but we got off char a little bit on other things that we should have stayed on the subdivision committee, but it will, we got what I did. Comments back from-
Lots to discuss.
Yeah, it was really interesting to see what the, what were there, about 20 people there, Tracy?
Uh, 24.
24, yeah. There were three commissioners, and Mr. Turner, myself, and Jared. It was really, it was really interesting to see what people had to say. And again, I was touched to see how most of the people there seemed to have read the complaint and knew what we stood for, what our vision for the county was, and were really wanting for those things to be respected. So that was, that was really pretty cool. And the Berkeley Group did a good job, in my opinion, of identifying on their part. So we were asked as a group to report among the four people of each group what concerns the members, the, the participants had in terms of zoning for the county. So some people mentioned junkyards, salvage, signage, all kinds of things were mentioned. And then, so that was discussed. And then the Berkeley Group brought up some concerns, which I assume arose from conversations with you and with whoever, that then we were asked if they were also concerns for us. So that was really a pretty comprehensive workshop, and the results were really quite enlightening. And I think, one thing that was brought up that I think they were impressed with is that one group suggested that maybe, instead of developing new commercial areas or industrial areas, as was suggested, that we should look at revitalizing our downtowns and rehabbing some existing properties. And the Berkeley Group thought that was really, really cool. And I did too. So that was actually really, really positive, and I'm glad I was able to participate. Thank you.
That's all that I have.
All right, thank you very much. And I have nothing else with that.